Then I'll call to order the August 11th, 2020 Voting and Finance Committee Meeting of the Carlington School District Board of Directors. We usually have our Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning. Director Honchar, would you want to lead us in our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic it stands.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you, George. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Yes. Director Apple.
Here.
Director Mendoza.
I'm here.
Director Simsek.
Here.
Director Zalewski.
Here.
Director Russo. Director Russo? No?
He was here. David, are you on mute? Maybe he's having trouble with his link.
Okay. Director O'Brien.
Here.
Director Frank.
Here.
Director Honchar.
Here.
And one more time, Director Russo.
I'll text David, Michelle, sorry.
All right, no problem. And Director Schreiber.
I'm here, thank you. There's always a time at the beginning of our meeting where we invite the public to comment on any item that's on our agenda tonight. There's also a time at the end of the meeting for the public to ask questions that are outside of our agenda. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on an agendted item this evening?
Just as a reminder to the public, if you would like to make a comment, please just raise your hand, that is in the toolbar in the Zoom meeting interface, then I will unmute I do not see any hands.
Very good. Thank you, Josh. Moving along, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 14th, 2020 voting meeting. Do I have a motion for that item?
Tell me.
Second.
Move to second, thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries. I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed litigation, contracts, and real estate, and that we will be having another executive session after this meeting where we'll discuss those three items as well as personnel. I'll turn it now to the superintendent for the report, and I'll just say Dr. Kreider, David is trying to get in, he's having some trouble with the link, so he'll be here shortly. Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. And yes, we did, we sent him another link, so he should be up and running very shortly. Tonight, we also have three additional administrative reports, and we have a few items on the agenda this evening, one of which is a new marquee at Crafton Elementary School for which we're very excited about. Mrs. Burleson is here this evening, and she would like to share some information about the purchasing of that marquee. Mrs. Burleson.
Hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. Well, thanks for letting me come on and speak about the Crafton Marquee. It is a very exciting time. This is something I've been talking about with lots of people since I came, just to update and create kind of a digital version. Well, over the spring, if some of you have walked by and noticed, there is a hole in the top of our marquee. So if it was through weather, or age, or however, this was the perfect opportunity to kind of just continue the conversation of going digital. So after a few conversations with Dennis McDade, our fabulous maintenance director, we, you know, looked into some examples, ones that did graphics, ones that didn't do graphics, we just kind of put everything on the table. And we did get a quote. So the next hard part was to find the money to get the marquee installed into Crafton. So there were three wonderful groups that helped us into the purchasing of the marquee, the first being the Pittsburgh Foundation. About 80% of the marquee is going to come from a grant from the Pittsburgh Foundation, and many of you are probably aware that the Pittsburgh Foundation came about through Reverend Bowen. He, I got to meet him one time, and he was a partner of Crafton before I even arrived through the doors, but heard so much about him, mentors and collaboration, and just being a great, wonderful person. Unfortunately, his passing happened a few years ago, and through that, he did provide a grant through the Pittsburgh Foundation for the children of Crafton. So about 80% of that will come from that grant. And then the second group of wonderful people would be the Crafton PTA. So I can't thank them enough. Anytime we need anything, the Crafton PTA is ready and willing to jump on board. So hands out to them, along with the sixth grade committee, which is part of the PTA, but also a separate entity. So they all were happy to just donate some money, and then, of course, Carlington, the next wonderful group who is going to make this sign happen. This sign is going to be multicolored. It's going to be, it's going to provide graphics. We worked really hard, there's a Bowen Committee, we worked really hard to just come up with ideas that would match kind of that structure of the building, the sophistication of the traditional style of the building, and that's what we decided on. It will be multicolored, it will provide graphics, and will also fit and be installed right into the brick border that's already there at Crafton in front, the old marquee is sitting in. So the new sign will be able to go into that, matching the same structure and appeal of the Crafton Elementary Building. So that was very important to us, to keep that style going. Now that we were able to choose that style, provide the funding, the next thing was just making sure that we could make it remote and change the information with everything that's happening recently. Unfortunately, it's very important to be able to change the sign from pretty much anywhere we are. So this gave us the opportunity to do that. So not only are we excited to have the convenience of changing this marquee anywhere, we're excited to be able to provide more and better information to you, because it's going to, it could be a running marquee, it could have pictures, it could have different colors to highlight different events on different days. So we're excited for this to happen and for the community to see it all kind of fall into
Thank you, Mrs. Burleson. And also this evening, joining us, we have our representatives from Aramark, and we had Mr. Hal Minford join us, actually, I believe it was somewhere close to March 13th, earlier this spring when we went into the school closures. So Mr. Minford was with us throughout the spring, however, we have not had the opportunity to formally introduce him to the public yet. And Mr. Minford is also joined by Mr. Cruz as well, from Aramark. And Mr. Minford, if you could, just give us an update on food service, please.
Um, yes. How's everybody doing today? I'm Hal Minford. No one has really met me yet. I literally started the day that the pandemic all started. Can everybody hear me? All right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. We're just trying to, we're formulating our plan for, of course, going remote for the first four and a half weeks as of now. We are sending out a survey this week to figure out who and what time would be the best for the children to come pick up their meals for the year, or for the four and a half weeks, I should say. One of the big things is convenience for the parents, because I know that a lot of the parents are now back to work and cannot come in the middle of the day to pick up lunches. The survey gives you three times. The three times are 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and then also during the day, 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Another thing that we're also introducing this year is a dinner meal for all after-school activities. For any after-school activity that would want to come pick up a free dinner meal, are more than welcome to come get them. They're free to the students. Basically, we'll have them set up in a refrigerator and ready for them to pick up at any time during the day. For, that was about all that we've really changed so far. We're working tirelessly to figure everything out and get this year rolling again.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Minford, and again, welcome to Carlington. Also tonight, we have Mr. Juswick. Mr. Juswick will give us an update on the budget and finance report. Mr. Juswick?
Okay, I'm going to attempt to... In July 31st, 2020, for the 1920 school year, we've done this the past, not last month, but we've been doing this the past about four months, is some comparisons. So you can see, remaining in our budget, this is, what we do here is take our accounting codes from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, codes 300 through 900, that eliminates all salary and benefits. So that's all our expenses outside of salary and benefits. Our ending balance last year, as we say, we usually run our books through August 31st, beginning of September, just to make sure we get all invoices from the previous year. And some of our staff, such as the professional teaching staff and such, that are start in September, their payroll runs from September 1 until the end of August. So in that case, we still have some payroll to filter through, through that, through the month of August, as we have two payrolls in August. As you can see, this is an end of the year number. Our remaining budget as of July 31st, 2020, for those expenses outside salary and benefits was $68,000. This year, we're at $1.1 million remaining. We eliminated some of our standing POs, and some of this is due to coronavirus. So if we do have some surpluses, we are looking to push that surplus into a capital projects fund, is, you know, we've had meetings with our, I would call it our finance committee group, with Director Russo's, Director Frank, Director Apple sat in on it with myself, Mr. McDade, and Dr. Kreider, and we've looked at some, we saw capital projects that could cost us, you know, we have $6 million in replacements, we kind of had a certain level, we could replace after five years and put some Band-Aids on, but this may actually help us do some real replacements, get the facilities where they need to be. One of the projects we could mention is the chillers that are part of the HVAC system, that could cost upwards somewhere between $600 and $700,000. So any additional we would have this year, over expected of us possibly breaking even, we would put to some of these capital projects. So the breakout I do, essentially, I see where we're at from the previous year into this year, so 1819, you see in column D as I highlight that, our expenses at July 31st last year were $27.148 million dollars. This year, at July 31st, we were $26.3 million, giving us about an $841,000 difference with better on expenditures. We've actually had less expenditures, and especially when you take into consideration, our budget number was $29.586 million in 1920 compared to $28.414 million in 1819. So as we were, we budgeted about $1.1 million more in expenses, we're $841,000 short of last year's actual expenses at this point. And if I jump into August of this year, sorry, this one's a little bit, I didn't blow this up and zoom into it, I can, let me do that real quick for you. So this is to date, I've estimated our payroll and benefits number, as you can see, we're not quite at 841,000. So we're up to this point in August with this estimated salary and benefits, $686,000 short of what our August 31st numbers were last year. So we're still in a pretty good place at this point. We also separate, you can see, we can share this on the website if Dr. Kreider would like, and you can see the percentages and differences in some of the expense areas where
Dr. Kreider, do we lose Chris?
Our employee benefits, purchase professional services, property services. Fuck, I wonder where our cars and transportation is, where you see that big difference of the seven, we didn't have transportation.
Mr. Juswick?
Somebody jump in?
Yeah.
Did I lose my connection?
Yes, you lost a little bit of your connection there. And are you still with us, Mr. Juswick? Okay, I believe...
He is not at the moment.
Okay, I believe we did, we did lose him. Yeah, he said he did, he got knocked out, so we'll wait for him to come back in. In the interim, Mr. Jones, if you could put us back into the screen for the board agenda. Thank you. And then if you could go to the superintendent's report and click on the report there.
I, I made it back.
Okay. Anything, anything, Mr. Juswick, that you wanted to add? I know we don't have your graphic up at this point.
Yeah, ultimately, so far, at the end of July 31st, we were at about $841,000, I believe I had there in August up to this point with estimated payroll put in through the end of the month, because we still have another payroll rolled around and benefits at this point. Range, let me just pull my spreadsheet up. We are in that, we are at $686,000 to the good on expenses. We're getting our final audited expenditures. Right now, we had auditors in last week to go in, they've... We were at 1.638 in accrued revenues, they said, are, some of our income taxes, they have, they're a little bit lower than expected at this point, but we're at 27.565 of our We budgeted 28.874. So if we were able to get in about 80% of what this year, that would put us up and possibly able to do some, do some things with our capital projects with some of that money we have over, above what we budgeted for the following year.
Okay, all good?
I have a question, Chris. Do I understand, you're, we're projecting that expenditures will come in, I think you said, $686,000, less than what we had budgeted, is that right?
Well, that's where it is so far in August. Now, we could, we're going to have some, we should have some additional expenditures coming through August that were for the previous school year, but we are looking, we're, that's 686 less than...
We're losing you, buddy.
David, I think I...
Last year for this time period, that's not first of the budget, that's versus last. Am I cutting in and out still?
Yeah, the 686, does that include salaries and benefits through the end of August?
Yeah, well, what I have there, I did give an estimate of salary and benefits through the end of August, yes. I estimated us payroll based on what our previous payroll was.
So there's some other items that will come out as a result of the audit, that we'll find out what they are, maybe it's $100,000, whatever it is, I mean, we'll find out what they are. On the revenue side...
We'll have some of those coming through still.
Right. On the revenue side, again, how are we looking? Pretty close to budget, or better than budget, or what's your sense? And Chris, here's where I'm going. We projected a $711 deficit for the year. What does it look like? Ultimately, that's where I'm going. What does it, at this point, look like? I think you had projected with the budget that we submitted, that would finish actually even, no deficit, no surplus. Does it look like that's the case? Is it going to be even better at this point?
I think it could even be better.
Thank you. Okay.
I think it could even end up a little bit better than that, which, that's where I look at some of that money's being able to put...
And I appreciate that this is all, at this point, we've got to get through the, we've got to get through the audit and sort of see how that all comes out, but that's good news. We should be finishing, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what I'm hearing is, we'll finish, very possibly, we're going to finish with a surplus.
I think we, with where our expenses are right now, I have a tough time seeing that not happening.
Okay.
And as you know, this year was, as you know, this year was a little bit tricky to try to play the guessing game with the normal audit with the way some of these expenses were coming in, because a lot of them went away that we did not expect, and then next year, we're looking at, and then we were buying things for next year to sit here and try to figure out, okay, we're spending more money, but we don't have certain things coming in. So it's been a tricky year to project.
And Chris, refresh my memory, last year, did we finish with a little bit of a surplus?
Yes.
We did. So we're, it's challenging. I give you and John high marks for the acumen you've displayed and the caution you've used financially to keep this district on the right path. I think you two are a big reason why, in fact, we are a very successful district. Some last night referred to us as a failing district, clearly, they do not pay attention to our meetings and what we're doing here. You guys are doing a great job. I know you're going to continue to do a great job, and it's all good news financially for us. Thank you very much.
Thanks, and I think that speaks to the cohesiveness, not only of the team we have in the admin, but the way the board works with us too. So I just think we have a really cohesive unit altogether, which is a great example, I think, the boards and, you know, certain governmental groups.
Clearly, you have a wonderful board.
So Director Russo, I'm glad you brought that up, and I'd like to second the appreciation that you expressed to our administrator team in keeping expenditures and revenues close to one another. Clearly, this is a, this is a pretty challenging year to, you know, hit the target, and we're lucky to have these guys. It's not going to get any easier moving forward, I think we can all agree on that. But, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to also say that, you know, the idea that this is a failing school district is, I don't know, I mean, every school district in the state of Pennsylvania has challenges, funding challenges, expenditure challenges, and, you know, to say something like that, just, to me, reflects a lack of knowledge of the basic situation and facts at hand, and I'm quite honestly offended by it. And, you know, I think that, I think that our communities value education, and I think that they understand that we have a lot of challenges that we deal with, but we also have a lot of support. And to say something like, our district is failing, it doesn't just reflect badly on our board, but also the people who worked so hard to make this an excellent educational experience for the children of the boroughs, but, you know, I mean, just the folks out there in the community who have graduated from Carlington, have put kids through Carlington, and who continue to support the district. So I'm glad I got that off my chest, because that was really burning me up.
I'd like to add, you know, I have decades' experience as a financial professional, both as a tax attorney and a CPA, and I tell you, this board that I've dealt with, we've had our backs and forth with a lot of different things, but this board has shown a tremendous amount of financial sophistication, as well as this administration. We find, we have faced some real, real challenges, and we've gone back and forth, and there've been some heated arguments, but we've always been together, working toward what's best, which is providing the best educational experience for the students, given the resources that we have, and all of our decisions are driven by that. We're not here to provide green spaces for Crafton, we're here to provide a solid education for our kids and utilize the limited resources that we have in the absolute best way possible. So I, you know, Chris, you mentioned this is a great board, it is a great board, fantastic administration, just a good group, and I tell you, I couldn't be more proud than I am to be associated with this group as we go forward, and there are going to be some tough times as we continue forward. So this is all good. This is transparent, this is upfront, this is candid, this is honest, and if we do this and we continue this way, we're going to be fine. We're going to continue on this path toward greatness that we have been on and continue on. So I don't, I'll get off my soapbox, but I just have so much pride in this district and this group that I'm associated with.
Well, and thank you both. It has been a challenging year, and we do look forward to another challenging year as well as we move forward with the pandemic and the impact that it is having on the economy, and we look to continue to work with the community and work with the board to move forward and still provide that outstanding education that we have in the past for our students. We will continue to do that moving forward. Also, members of our administrative team are also committed to lifelong learning, and it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Edward Mantich. Dr. Mantich recently defended his dissertation at Duquesne University, and he defended the title of his dissertation, pardon me for reading, it is the effectiveness of blended learning utilizing Ed Mentum's Courseware Math Library in the Carlington Middle School Mathematics Classroom. So Dr. Mantich, congratulations to you. You certainly are a role model for lifelong learning, and we greatly appreciate all of your valuable input that you've had to the district, and congratulations, Dr. Mantich.
Dr. Kreider, thank you very much for those kind words, and I also like to thank everybody for the text messages and the emails I received over the past week of congratulations, they really meant a lot to me. Just to make one correction, my doctorate is through California, not Duquesne. My other degrees were all through Duquesne, but this one was through California, so, and it's kind of hard to believe that the journey's over, you know, it really haven't sunk into me yet, but, you know, again, thank you very much for all your kind words, and thanks again.
Absolutely. And now to transition to the next phase is just a presentation on the district's reopening plan, so we have some additional information to share. This PowerPoint presentation will be made available on our website, and will also be communicated out in pieces as well through literature that will be distributed to our families and residents over the next week prior to school starting. Mr. Jones, if you could transition to the next slide, please? So as we start off, as you've recognized, the district at the July 14th meeting indicated that Carlington School District will open classes on Monday, August 24th, and we will be using a remote model, and the district committed to four and a half weeks, which takes us to roughly September 28th, which would be the first opportunity for us to transition into face-to-face through a hybrid or through a traditional model. Throughout the course of the next few weeks, we will continue to monitor local conditions, and we will use incident rate and both percentage positivity in the local community. That information was recently relayed to us from Governor Wolf, who provided some parameters to help districts make decisions before transitioning to the next model. who provided some parameters to help districts make decisions before transitioning to the next model. So if we monitor the conditions over the next few weeks, if we still deem it not to be safe to reopen our schools to our students, we will continue in the remote learning model until it is further determined that we could move to the next phase. Those next two phases, as we covered in the last board meeting, would either be running our schools at 50% or at 100% capacity. The 50% model is basically uses the hybrid model, which uses both remote and in-person instruction. And then the traditional model represents the 100% model, which is where we ask for all students to report back to school. All elements of our health and safety plan will be followed during every phase that we are in, whether that is remote, hybrid or traditional. And then also throughout each of those phases, remote learning will be available to all of our families as well. And I'll explain that a little bit more in detail. We look for learning supplies with our Chromebooks to be distributed next week. That distribution plan is set for Friday and Saturday of next week. As Mr. Menford has mentioned, we plan to send out a survey in regard to food service. Also embedded into that survey will be questions related to technology and some other questions as well. We greatly appreciate the input that we've received from our community. It's very important that you continue to provide us with that feedback so we can continue to make good decisions moving forward. Within that distribution of technology, we also look to give students bags of materials. And within those bags of materials may be consumable textbooks for English language, also for math books, and then also some other supplies that students can use as manipulatives and help with that interaction in the remote sessions through the home setting to the school setting as well. So again, those plans will be shared with our family members during the next week. And we look for Friday and Saturday of next week for those distributions. Mr. Jones, if you could move to the next slide, please. So as we look at the remote learning process here, remote learning, the way we have it designed will be a combination of both synchronous and asynchronous learning. Basically synchronous is when all students are learning at the exact same time. That's generally what we do with live instruction in the classroom. That's an example of synchronous learning. Asynchronous learning, an example of that is where information is put out through Google Classroom and students have the opportunity to work and consume that material at their own pace or at their own timeframe throughout the course of the school day. So as far as what that looks like in a synchronous classroom, we're looking for live classroom lessons that are delivered by our teachers using Google Classroom. We will be engaging, that will create an environment where our students can engage very effectively with our teachers and then also create the opportunity for our students to engage with one another. So that peer-to-peer relationship and then teacher-to-student relationship as well. Within the synchronous learning, we will also have opportunities for group activities as well in a virtual environment. And it also provides great opportunity for our teachers to provide students with feedback, real-time assessment data, being able to read and interact with students, be able to get feedback from students using whiteboards as they write answers down and able to hold them up on the screen and share that information back with their teachers, be able to do some very interesting aspects working in the remote environment. And then what we also have set up is scheduled reporting times for our students, which I'll share the schedule here very shortly for both elementary and secondary levels. Now, along with that, it's very important for us to also offer asynchronous learning activities for our students as well. We recognize that there will be some of our students due to childcare needs or to other special circumstances that will not be able to attend live sessions during the school day. So what we will have is asynchronous learning available for all of our students, which will be any of the combinations of following, not necessarily all of those on every given day. But it's very likely that some teachers will record a demonstration lesson ahead of time prior to class, asking students to watch a short 10 to 15-minute video about instruction that's going to come up during that day. It could also just be recorded videos afterwards to help students move forward with assignments. Could be independent practice activities using prepared instructional materials, any type of reading assignments or simple tasks in regard to instructional activities, and then also working in their consumable textbooks. So as far as that, it's that combination of synchronous and asynchronous learning that's going to provide a lot of flexibility to our students, but also create that engaging type of environment for our students as well. Instruction occurs at the same pace. Therefore, students will have deadlines to submit any types of homework, assignments, activities. There will be deadlines for the students to submit those. The recorded lessons will be uploaded into Google Classroom. So as a teacher delivers a lesson, very similar to what we're doing right now, this video would be recorded and then this session would also be uploaded into Google Classroom. So in the evening, if a student had a question or if they weren't able to attend during the day, they would be able to view specifically exactly what happened during the classroom activity using that feature. We will also have evening support for our students and that will occur with evening support through a variety of professionals and instructional support staff as well to be available for our students. That will help if students need assistance, simply just accessing the coursework or if they have a math question, if they have an English question. They will have the ability to work with individuals to help them through that process. The bottom line is that when we take a look at everything, it is engaging, it's flexible and it's safe throughout the remote learning activities. Also, you'll see on the next slide here coming up, we'll also demonstrate that teachers will have office hours throughout the course of the school day and that will be available at both elementary and at secondary. That'll provide students with the opportunity to ask follow-up questions with their teacher, live face-to-face interactions in a Google Classroom setting. So Mr. Jones, if you could forward to the next slide, please. What we'll see here is an example of the daily schedule for secondary students. So this is for students in grade seven through 12. You'll notice across the top, seventh and eighth graders have a separate schedule simply based on their lunch period. And then two separate schedules there for nine through 12. And again, that is also based on lunch schedules as well. You can see that we have all eight periods meeting along with the homeroom as well. Each of our periods, we designed them to be 30 minutes in length. What we wanted to be very conscientious of as we designed both these models here for both elementary and for secondary is we wanted to make sure we were being very conscientious of screen time. So each of our classes here, they're a half hour in length. As we had mentioned, there will be a synchronous, which is the face-to-face meeting here. And then there will also be asynchronous activities as well for students to work on, which could be viewing videos, it could be working on consumable textbooks, working in Google Classroom on pre-assigned types of activities to extend the learning beyond the scope of the 30-minute classroom experience. We also look at, at the end of the day, at the secondary level, is we have over an hour of time that students would have access directly to their teacher. So throughout the course of the day, period one is math, period two is family consumer science, period three is English. At the end of the day, as students work through that coursework, if they have a question prior to going into the evening in regard to any of their content areas, they'll have the opportunity to come back at the end of the day and talk directly with the teacher of their course. It's plenty of time, which would give the student an opportunity to meet with a math teacher, an English teacher, a social studies teacher, whatever teacher they have on their course roster. They will have access then to that teacher at the end of the day at the secondary level. As we move to the next slide, we'll take a look at the elementary schedules. And these are a little bit more difficult to see since we did put them all on here. These schedules will be communicated out by our elementary principals. But as you can recognize, we follow a very similar philosophy here with the elementary students. You can see that the time is blocked in half-hour increments, giving time for English Language Arts, Math, Unified Arts throughout the course of the school day. And also throughout the course of the school day, there is time for our elementary students to have access to their teacher as well by using office hours. And you'll also notice from the design as well, taking into consideration screen time, is that lunch and recess has been partnered back-to-back. So it gives students an hour's worth of time during the middle of the day somewhere to be able to get a lunch, relax, recharge and then head back into afternoon activities. And then for most students, at the end of the day, have some office hours as well to meet with individual teachers. So if we move to the next slide. Once we make the determination that we are ready to move forward with our next phase of learning and that could be moving either directly into a hybrid or moving directly into traditional, some important things to recognize as we make those transitions. The hybrid model, as we mentioned, it's 50%. That's where our students, half of our students report on Mondays and Thursdays. The other half of our students report on Tuesdays and Fridays. So now when we have students physically reporting to the building, that is when the elements of our health and safety plan are extremely important. We will make sure that all of our health and safety plan is implemented effectively. And then on Wednesdays, we have remote learning then for all students. And it's important to realize, I think many have seen different forms of the hybrid model, working with Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, and also looking at models where students report Monday, Tuesday, and then also on Thursday, Friday, and sparks two separate groups. We went with the Monday, Thursday and Tuesday, Friday split simply for the educational value in regard to keeping more close contact with face-to-face instruction in the classroom with our teachers. That allows for very short intervals of time throughout that face-to-face interaction as opposed to going Monday, Tuesday, and then almost taking five days off until you see your teacher again. The information that we're learning from the spread of the virus indicates that much, the main spread of the virus is coming from respiratory direct contact. The best way that we can mitigate that is by keeping our physical distance, keeping students at six feet, which through the hybrid model, we can do. It is also by wearing masks and it is also encouraging individuals who are experiencing symptoms to stay at home when they are sick. So if we put those three items into place, we are very confident that with our cleaning schedules that we have in place, Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, it's going to work out very well for us. Lessons will also be broadcast live from the classroom. So as students who are on their off cycles one Monday or Thursday, depending, will still have a live insight into the classroom and can follow through that progression of classroom work. All of those recorded lessons then will be uploaded onto Google Classroom, again, meeting the needs of students who cannot attend live instruction. And then students can also continue to opt for remote learning. So if we have a family who has a child with pre-existing conditions and they're not comfortable sending their child to school, they can still opt to learn from home where they would still have that access directly into the classroom through a feed or also through those recorded feeds. Moving into a traditional model, the difference here is that we're now moving into 100%. That's where we would have all of our students reporting to school and every day. In most of our classrooms, we can get a four-foot separation. There are some of our classrooms where we're looking anywhere between 36 and 40 inches that we can get with separation. So moving into a traditional model is down the line when we get additional guidance from the state or the CDC that says that that six-foot social distancing is no longer a strong recommendation. There may be times when that will start to be relaxed a little bit. That's when we can start to consider that traditional model. Or if we collect information from our families that would indicate that they are still not comfortable reporting to school, but we do have a larger population who still is comfortable and we feel that we could safely bring in a population of our students and still have a population of students at home who are comfortable learning from that environment as well. So we'll make those decisions based on information that's gathered through surveying our community and through our families. I think what you'll see in each of these is that all models allow for flexibility. We will teach students wherever they are. We will teach students whenever they can have access to us. Students will be able to learn even if they are under quarantine and recognize that quarantine would not necessarily be the direct result of an issue that was discovered at school. Students could be quarantined simply based on community spread and infection within a household where they would be required to be quarantined. Attendance, we will use two reference points to gather attendance data. And what we're looking for there, obviously in synchronous learning during that face-to-face environment, when we're back to 100%, we will use classroom teachers will go through and collect the attendance data. But as we are in a remote setting, we will rely on data that we capture from students' logins from Google Classroom. And we will also use submission of coursework. So we want to make sure that our students stay engaged. And by staying engaged, that simply means that they're logging on to Google Classroom, they're following through with lessons, they could be attending the live sessions, they could be working in the evening depending on their situation. But in the end, it's very important that our students stay engaged and continue to submit their coursework to document their learning so that they can get feedback from their teachers. The transition among each of the models, also the design that we put in here, also creates that consistency with students still getting instruction from the same teacher at the same time of the day throughout the course of the school year by following through their regular schedule. So that consistency part remaining with the same teacher is extremely important for us. And all models also create that opportunity for that engagement with their teachers and then also with their peers. Next slide, please. And I'll turn things over to Mrs. Hoffman, who is our Director of Special Education and Pupil Services. She has a few items to include here with student support. Mrs. Hoffman? You might be on mute.
Well, there you go. Let's try this again. Sorry. Hi, everyone. So we're looking at additional supports available. We have our school nurses and we have two of them, Trina and Sharon. They are available for any assistance with any families if they have any questions. They also have a Google Classroom where they'll be posting things that will be coming to them through the state and through the Health Department that can help keep the community informed on any new information. We have our school counselors. We have two at the high school and we have Ms. Lee that will be shared between Carnegie and Crafton. They will also be available to help and support any of the families or students with mental health. We have our school psychologist and we have the CHIL program, which is specific to Carnegie Elementary. And the services will be through AHN. Crafton and the high school will still have mental health services and their provider is Wesley Family Services. So if you've had services at Carnegie, please don't think that we are dropping those outpatient services. But we will be in contact with our new therapist through AHN. They'll be contacting you to see if you want to continue with those outpatient services. And also, we're doing a student assistance program. We are continuing that. The model's going to be, we're going to meet bi-weekly in each building and continue with that. We do have a new provider and the new provider is HSAO. They will be providing the services for the SAP program. Our GATE services will continue. Mrs. Eddy is back, so I'm sure that'll make a lot of families pleased there. She's going to help prepare for enrichment competitions. She'll work on embedded activities within the classroom, working with the regular education staff to provide the supports and also meeting with small groups, storing her office hours. And there is still going to be a homeroom up at the junior, senior high school as well, so she can meet anyone up there. Should anyone have any specific questions, please don't hesitate to contact me with specific questions and I'll be glad to answer them to the best as I can.
Next slide, please. Go ahead, Mrs. Hoffman. Also, the student support with IEPs and 504s?
Sure. Sorry, I couldn't see. We have the individualized education programs and the 504 service agreements. Please understand that I'm asking all teachers, case managers, including nurses and school counselors to meet and review their IEPs and 504s if we need to make any adjustments. Because we are in remote learning, we absolutely will. We will still be able to provide special-designed instruction, accommodations and related services when possible. Again, they are going to be live. I know in the spring they were not, but they will be live and a lot of people will be pleased for occupational therapy. We are getting. We are getting manipulatives ready and specific to each student with their needs. We will also be collaborating, the special education teachers will be collaborating with the regular education teachers, principals, and parents, and we ask that the communication is ongoing. If there's anything that's not working, if we need to sit down and revise stuff and figure out different ways to provide some of the services, we're open to doing that. The IEP, like I said, the IEP teams may need to reconvene and revise some of the specially designed instructions, and the same thing with 504s. And I am having a meeting tomorrow evening via Zoom at 7:00, and we're going to have our school psychologists and transition coordinator join us for any Q and As that the community may have. And I appreciate some of the parents and guardians reaching out to me via email or phone currently, you know, trying to help work with us on the situation. So this is an individualized education plan, so it's unique to every student, and we're just taking it one child at a time. If you have any questions, like I said, please feel free to reach out to me. Josh, is there the next slide, please? Okay, back to Dr. Kreider.
Good. Thank you, Mrs. Hoffman. Also, some other valuable information as far as the transition between phases. We would like to remind families that in the event if we do work our way back into a hybrid or we work our way back into a traditional model, we also recognize that there could be a spike of the virus in the area. So we would ask parents and families that they are prepared to move very quickly into a remote learning setting once again. When we make the transition between any of our phases, we will do our best to provide families with as much advance notice as possible as we move through our phases. Students who attend Parkway West Career and Technology Center, we will be starting off, we were working with Parkway West. They are prepared to offer instruction remotely for the first four and a half weeks. As we move through our models, we will continuously type, go through and evaluate how that has an impact on our students who attend Parkway West. If we move into a hybrid schedule, our Parkway West students will be able to attend and follow the Parkway West schedule if they're going full traditional and have 100% of their students back. If we're in a hybrid model, students at Parkway West will be able to go full-time. And same thing is, once we go to traditional, provided that Parkway West is also traditional and offering full-time instruction, our students will be able to attend full-time there as well. Grading, as far as our grades go, in the spring, we did do some shifting and moved some courses into pass/fail at the elementary level. Across the grades K through 12, we will be looking at traditional letter grades throughout the course of the school year, and that way we will also maintain marking period dates to remain the same. Meals will be made available to all students during all of our phases, whether we're remote, hybrid, or traditional, and that would include for students who would also elect to receive instruction at home in any of those models. We will use our elementary schools as distribution points, and as Mr. Menford had mentioned previously, we're looking at some different timeframes and look to survey our families moving forward. Now, Mr. Jones, another last slide here, please. And just to summarize everything, the focus that we looked at when we designed these models was that we wanted it to be engaging, we wanted it to be flexible, and we wanted to make sure that it was safe for our students. Working together, we are confident that we will continue to provide valuable learning experiences for our students in each and every one of our models. All phases of instruction are designed to create a safe and engaging learning environment for all our students. All phases create that valuable flexibility that provides to our families, and during the phases of instruction, we will be able to provide additional support for students who struggle in the learning process. That's the conclusion of this presentation as far as the opening of school. As some of our board members mentioned earlier, as far as the challenges to working within the confines of budgets, there's also other types of challenges that we look towards when we move into a remote model in itself. Moving into the remote model, there are some positions across the district where we struggle to be able to find work for individuals who serve in those positions. This evening, you will notice that we do have furloughs listed for board approval. As we approach furloughing, that decision is never an easy decision for anyone to make. All of the individuals who are in this group this evening that are receiving furlough notices are hard-working individuals who have dedicated much of their life towards Carlington and have helped add and make Carlington a valuable experience for all of our students. However, at the present time, we'll be moving into a remote model, and we look at playground aides and assistants, and we look also at our nursing assistants as well. At the present time, we don't have work for those individuals to complete on a daily basis for us. We will continue to monitor the workflow in each of our spaces to determine if and when we can bring those individuals back from furlough. As soon as we get students back into the building, we will definitely need all of those positions, and we would look to transition those individuals back into their positions prior to our students coming back as well. That concludes my presentation this evening. Mr. Schreiber, I'm not sure, we didn't have any questions at the beginning of the presentation. Not sure if you want to open things up for questions on the presentation, or if you'd like to just move through the agenda and hold those questions towards the end. I leave that to you, sir.
I think you raised a good point. Since this is such a pertinent, timely topic, if there are community members that do have questions about Dr. Kreider's presentation or Mrs. Hoffman's portion, please raise your hand now. We'll take some quick questions if there are any.
I do have one question, it looks like from Lynn O'Hara. You are permitted to talk at this time. Just unmute yourself. I just tell you that we do require that you state your name and your address before you speak.
Hi, this is Lynn O'Hara. I live at 221 Clearview Avenue here in Crafton. And my question actually was mostly answered by Mrs. Hoffman, but I do need to know where I can find the information since I do have a child that has an IEP. Where can I find the information to join that meeting tomorrow?
And Mrs. Hoffman, from what I understand, we posted the link on the webpage. Can you, are you able to provide additional clarity on that?
Michelle shaking her head. Michelle, did we post it? I think, I know it was an e-blast that got sent.
It was in the e-blast that was sent out last Friday. It's not on the website, but I can post it on the website.
Could you do that, please, Michelle? That way, I think that'd be easier for people that don't have an email address they can access.
Sure. Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, any other questions?
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you. Dr. Kreider, any other components to your report, or you complete?
That completes our reports for this evening.
Great, thank you. Moving on to our committee reports, Parkway West Director Appleby, anything to share with us about Parkway West?
Well, thank you for asking. Yes, I do. Always something exciting going on at Parkway. It's been a while since the meeting, like more than a month at this point, but I can tell you that just a few highlights. So enrollment is looking like it's going up, and that's always good. They, the director Darby Copeland has assured me that, you know, with all the different schools in the jointure, there are many different scenarios for opening up those different schools, school districts, and they've got, they've got remote learning plans in place for at least three weeks at this point, and he assured me that they'll be ready to take care of anything that, you know, we need. So that's good. Let's see. Just trying to keep this brief because it's kind of at this point stale, but I do want to mention that last year, 37 Carlington students earned industry certifications through their programs at Parkway, which is a big deal. That means they can go right to work after graduating. They don't have to spend any money to get that certification that's required for their job and their chosen career. Some of those, some of those 37 students earned multiple certifications in the industry. So, you know, it's a really good thing for kids who choose technical and career education that they can immediately start in their chosen career path. Well, one other thing that, just, it's kind of an interesting item. It's always looking for economies of scale and ways to save money for the districts. So they have an agreement in place to share our Parkway's business manager with Steel Valley or Steel Center, I guess. They're going to share some services. The idea is to save some money but also retain, retain the business manager because, you know, he's pretty good, and career and technical centers don't, don't really pay as well as districts typically. So the fact that we're able to share him with Steel Center means that he can have a bit of an increase in pay without any extra money coming from us, but without the, any real cost either as far as our, you know, needing him and getting things done. So just thought that was an interesting and creative way to share services and maybe save some money. And, you know, who knows, as time goes on, maybe it's a, I'm not suggesting, you know, that we share Chris, but, you know, just the idea that we could, at some point, with other districts, you know, look to maybe sharing some services or purchasing or something like that. I think that's about it. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to Pathfinder, Director Hans Schard, do you have any updates regarding Pathfinder?
Yes, Jim. The, we haven't had a meeting at Pathfinder since June, and our next meeting will be next Wednesday. But just to refresh from my last report a couple months ago, our attendance is slightly up, and as the June meeting, we have two students coming in this fall from Carlington. And also, as far as social distancing, the building was built for four times the attendance that we have now. That was back in 1967 when there were many more kids taken out of our, out of our school and put into Pathfinder. So as far as social distancing, there will be no problem because they have more than enough space. I'll give you a report on next week's meeting next month. Thanks.
Sounds good. Thank you. Regarding Shazda, Director Zlaski, any meetings with Shazda or any updates?
Nothing has been shared with me at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Legislative PSBA, we might be jumping a little bit. I think we have a motion later, but Director Simsek, any early reports for your new role?
I don't have anything on that just yet. I do have something on Education Foundation if you want me to move ahead on that.
Would love to, absolutely. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm very excited to say that we are planning to meet via Zoom next week on Wednesday. So I feel really happy about that. It feels like we're getting a little bit back to normal. I'll have more after we meet for sure, but I'm just happy to report we are going to meet.
Fantastic. Thank you. And thank you for pulling double duty on committees. Appreciate it. Moving on, under Section 4 of our agenda, there are two items for consideration. I'll entertain a motion to approve these two items. Number one, the appointment of Christine Simsek to the committee position for PSBA and Legislative Representative. And number two, MOU between the district and the Carlington Federation of Teachers as submitted. I have motion for those two items.
Second.
Second.
Moved in the second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Good. Dr. Kreider, could you explain what the purpose of the MOU is?
Yes, you're looking at the MOU with the Federation, correct?
Yes, yes.
Mainly, the MOU addresses the change in schedule as far as using different types of time to prepare throughout the course of the school day to prepare and upload materials onto Google Classroom. It also creates the opportunity to record and livestream the instructional activities and upload those also to Google Classroom as well. Those are the major tenants there, I believe, without looking at it specifically.
Okay. And this is this memorandum of understanding, this is where the parties have talked about what needs to be done moving forward and cooperatively work together to come to some kind of understanding of what makes the most sense for all concerned. Is that correct?
It is, and I'm glad the wording that you used there, I think, is very important. Throughout this entire process, the district and the Federation have created a very strong relationship in regard to remaining committed to providing our students with a solid education. And the reason for us being able to come up with a plan that we have is due to that joint communication, respect for each other, respect for learning, and it is mainly through this MOU that we're able to move forward and provide those services to our students. So.
Yeah, and again, another example, especially in this extraordinary, challenging, stressful time of where within this district, the parties are all working together to achieve some things that are in the best interest of not just the students but all concerned. So kudos to you, kudos to the teachers. Again, what a great group to be a part of.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or discussions on the motion on the table? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Under Section 5 Finance, we have seven items. I'll entertain a motion to approve the following. Number one, the professional services agreement between the district and Wesley Family Services for the period of August 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Number two, the 2019-2020 yearly joint review as submitted by Airmark Food Services. Number three, the license agreement between the district and the borough of Roseland Farms for district use of the athletic field per the terms of the agreement. Number four, to move all but 8% of the general fund balance to an assigned fund balance for the 2020-2021 school year for future expenditures related to PESR's healthcare benefits and building renovations retroactive to June 30th, 2020, as directed by the auditors. Number five, to prove the bills for the November 26, 2019 check run in the amount of $284,523.37. Number six, the engagement fee agreement letter to engage and retain the legal services of Michael Palumbo as special labor counsel for the district. And number seven, the purchase of a marquee for Crafton Elementary School at a cost of $22,150. Purchase will be funded in part by the Reverend Bowen Foundation and the Crafton Elementary PTA. The district will cover the remaining balance not to exceed $2,000. I have a motion for those seven items.
So move.
Second. Moved in second. Thank you. Any discussion?
So on number 57, I think, I think a lot of us remember just all the great stuff that the Reverend Bowen, Ed Bowen, did for the Carlington School District as well as the Crafton community. And it honestly really kind of moves me a little bit to see that he still is having a, you know, an effect on things here after he's been gone for a while. I don't know. I mean, it doesn't have to be done now. It's just something I thought I'd, just came into my mind, but it might be nice to have some sort of a plaque or remembrance or something like that on the marquee. It doesn't have to be done like when the thing's being built or whatever, but I just kind of like to put it out there that maybe we'd like to offer some sort of offer some sort of remembrance to Reverend Bowen and, and the PTA for their, their, their contribution.
It's a nice idea, Joe. And I like your, your comments about Dr. Bowen. He was a great, great individual. Any other comments or questions on, or on the motion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Under section six, personnel, there are eleven items. I believe because of the continued delay in, in athletics, we're going to skip item number one. So I'm going to entertain a motion to approve items two through eleven. Number two, a letter of intent to retire is submitted by Crafton Elementary Lunchroom Playground Age Sharon Daley, effective August first, twenty twenty. Number three, the leave of absence request is submitted by employees C F T two zero two one dash zero one, zero two and zero three. Number four, to prove the appointment of Heather Ravenstall to the class one position of Secretary of Carnegie Elementary School, effective August fifth, twenty twenty, under the terms of the S C A Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number five, the appointment of Stephen Gable to the position of custodian, effective August seventeenth, twenty twenty, pending the receipt of updated clearances and compliance with the terms of the Custodial Maintenance Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number six, the reassignment of Kathleen Pharaoh to the position of Class Three Clerical Aid, Clerical Library Aid at Carnegie Elementary School for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year and under the terms of the S C A Collective Bargaining Unit Agreements. Number seven, the reassignment of Justin Lammer to the position of Class Three Autistic Support Aid at Crafton Elementary School for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year, under the terms of the S C A Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number eight, to prove Isabella Zanone as a summer technology helper at an hourly rate of ten dollars and effective July twenty second, twenty twenty. Number nine, the furloughs of the attached Class Four Positions with the Secretary, Secretary Cafeteria Aides Collective Bargain Unit Agreement, subject to recall and effective August twenty first, twenty twenty. Number ten, the furloughs of the attached Class Three Positions with the S C A Collective Bargain Unit, subject to recall and effective August eighteenth, twenty twenty. And finally, number eleven, to accept the letter of resignation from Carnegie Elementary Teacher Lindsay Smith, effective immediately. I have a motion for those items two through eleven, please.
Jim, before you do that, could you, could you break out the number ten furloughs of Class Three positions for a separate vote? Is that possible? I have a conflict of interest in that.
We could, I'll turn to our solicitor if you like to comment.
You could, George, you can, you can vote and say, you know, if you're voting aye on everything, you say, aye, I abstain from number blah, rather than have to pull it out.
That'll be fine.
Work for you?
Thank you for that advice, Tony.
George, thank you for bringing that up. Do we have a motion and a second on, on that?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion, any questions? And George, just note if you're going to abstain from a certain piece, just note which, which item. We'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
I vote for aye, except for number ten, I abstain.
And that's due to a conflict, Mr. Hans?
One of the employees is my sister.
Yeah, you just have to say it's due to a conflict.
Okay.
Thank you, George. Thank you, everyone. Motion passes. I'll move on to section seven, old business. Does any director have any old business they'd like to bring up? That will move on to new business. Any director of any new business they wish to discuss? If not, we'll move on to the open forum. Mr. Jones, are there any members of the audience who wish to ask the board a question in the open forum section?
Yes, I do have two. One is a written one and the other is live. So we'll go with the live one first and then I'll read the next one. This one's going to be John Oliverio. You are permitted to speak. You'll just need to unmute your microphone and please state your name and address before speaking. You're good to talk now, John. Yep, you're unmuted.
I'm John Oliverio.
I can't hear him.
Yeah, John, you seem to be fading out. I don't know if you're far away from your microphone.
Is this better?
Yes, much.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. I had two questions regarding the Carlington School Tax. So the deadline for the discount is, is coming up and I had two questions. One was, there's a significant increase in the millage. And I was wondering, especially seeing the budget tonight, actually for the first time, that there isn't a decrease and in fact, the students were set back in March, so there had to be less related to the facilities based on that, or I'm making an assumption. And has there been any consideration in lowering that millage rate? The second question I have is a lot of the boroughs are delaying the payment of their taxes, whether it be the Allegheny County, the local boroughs. Has there been any thought in pushing the deadlines and decrease and the full amounts back, especially based on the budget I've seen tonight? Thank you.
Thank you, John. I know our board has discussed these items. Dr. Kreider, do you want to address, I guess, the second item or both of the items regarding the board's position, the administration's position around the, the tax issue?
Yes, for the extension of the, the deadline for the taxes, the second part there, Mr. Juzwick, are you able to, to address that issue?
Yes, there was no requirement by state or federal statute that said we had to, it said we could. Unfortunately, you know, when you're doing a budget, our, our budget this year, I think we were around the, David said earlier, the seven hundred and eleven thousand dollar mark. We had no real idea how this would all shake out with the COVID, how high our savings would actually be at that point. But also on the other end of it, we look at a year to year basis on that. So we, with our cash flow, with our capital projects, this would have severely hindered our cash flow for the following year. And we may have possibly had to take a tax anticipation note. So it didn't make a lot of sense for the district unless it was required to push back some of those dates on the, on the tax bills. Who's capable of paying will pay at that point. It just didn't make sense. It was considered, but we had to look at the district's cash flow. And then to go into the millage aspect of it, we did a five-year, five-year budget plan essentially. And, you know, it's hard to look five years into the future, but as we see it with some of that, with the number of teachers we have hitting jump step through the con track we're currently in, we saw, you know, our fund balance going down severely with, and if you were listening to earlier in, in the meeting when we're talking about our, in our financial report, you add on to the fact that, you know, we have about six million dollars of capital projects we, we need to get done here. On top of continuing our education program, it's just unfortunately, if we weren't able to raise that millage where we were able to this year, we would have saw the effects of it going forward, not having raised that millage. So it was, it was pretty critical to our operations, our facilities, the education of our children that, you know, bump it for this current year.
Chris, could you explain one thing?
Yes.
We, the current budget that was passed that is applicable for the year twenty twenty one, the budget that we have right now. We've, we're forecasting in that budget a deficit, are we not?
Yes.
Do you recall that amount?
Thousand, above six hundred thousand dollars.
Six hundred thousand. And that's also, it's a deficit, even though we've raised the millage rate as much as we did, we still have that deficit, correct? And also prior to the passage of that budget, we had a number of furloughs, did we not?
Correct. So though with those furloughs, that's where it even got us down to.
We took action to reduce our expenditures as much as we could in those areas, that being salary and benefits, the most significant areas that we have, reduced them as much as we could. We, we've increased the millage rate as much as we could, and yet we still have a deficit. So really, we really didn't have a choice but to raise our millage rate as we did. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's correct. And, and even to pal on to what you're saying, unfortunately, some of this is coming to local responsibility, more and more each year is our federal funding. We took decrease in our federal funding of about sixty, I think sixty thousand dollars this year. Additionally, with this fallout, people being out of work, we, we really don't know what our state funding will be in future years. They held it still this year, but we don't know what money's coming in. And so, you know, for my professional organization, for all their business managers and in the state of Pennsylvania, there are a lot of unknowns going forward that, you know, the responsibility is going to come from the localities. And, you know, how can we increase some of our commercial businesses in our communities and such, which led us to give a little more real estate taxes to help with some of these things that would help kind of subsidize those millage rates going up and such. So, you know, there are improvements we could make in our communities with commercial real estate and such at that point. So, you know, the goal is we can take some of that off of the, some of that responsibility off of local, but it's very unknown where we're going to be at with some of this state funding. And the best I can tell you to do is reach out to your local representatives and, you know, ask the questions on charter school funding and such. And, you know, look at the requests that they, the state helps fund the schools also, therefore to take some of that responsibility off of the local, local folks.
And, and one additional question, maybe Tony, you can chime in as well. In terms of the payment of the taxes that any resident or property owner in the district has, certainly there's a period in which you can pay and receive a two percent discount. Then there's another period in which you can pay the face amount. And then beyond that, there is a penalty. And then finally, there are also, there's also an option to pay with installments.
Yes.
How much of that is at the discretion of the district? How much of that is actually dictated by the school code, school code and the state?
Well, it's all dictated by the local tax collection law. It's, and it's mandatory. It says shall, the two percent discount, it says you get, that you shall have two months from the date of the notice to pay a discount. And then you shall have four months from then to pay at face. Then after that, November first, it become, the penalty would kick in. December thirty first, it becomes delinquent. That's when it gets turned over to the appointed delinquent collector. And then it's, it's collected from there as delinquent with the penalty.
So we as a board really don't have much opportunity or much say in how these payments can be made. It's, it's pretty much dictated to us. Is that fair to say?
That is correct. And that, that is the law that was passed just recently, though, to give, that it's discreet. The only discretion you had was for an extension of the discount period, but like Chris said, that, that, that really impacts the cash flow of a district. So, and then if, if you, if you did waive the penalty, that would be forever for the, for the first year. So that would be another problem in terms of, you know, incentivizing payment from taxpayers.
Thank you.
Yes, and that, that may have caused us that, with that tax anticipation note, to take on interest bearing money that we would have to pay back when some of that tax money came in.
Thanks, Chris.
Mr. Oliverio, if I could provide additional context, you asked a pretty good question. If you look back ten or twelve years, the district was in a surplus situation. Once the state changed the pension contribution amounts, and this is all public information, but once the state changed the pension contribution amounts, our actual costs rose by millions of dollars and it has put this district and every other district in Pennsylvania in a tight position to try to figure out how to come up with these monies, which were not provided for from revenue streams. So most districts across the state have been faced with increasing their tax rates to the maximum just to pay for this increased pension cost each year. So that's the additional context that, that's causing what you're seeing. Mr. Jones, any other questions in queue?
Yes, we have actually someone who put questions in the Q and A, but also is raising their hand. So I will unmute them as well. And that is going to be Elizabeth Exler. You are now permitted to speak at this time. You'll just need to unmute your microphone. Please state your address for the record, please.
Hi, everyone. I just meant to put it in the comments, but this is Liz Exler, thirty nine South Emily Street in Crafton. So I have three questions. I'm going to start with my third question and work backwards. I was a little, I was pleased to see that the secondary school will start at eight, but I'm wondering why we don't have them start at nine and have the elementary school start at eight, given teenagers like to sleep in.
Yeah, I, I could address that. What we were looking for there is consistency throughout each of the three models in regard to the design. So that if we make those, those quick transitions between remote to traditional to hybrid, we want to make great attempts to try to keep as much consistency as possible. Throughout the course of the school year, if we do go back into a hybrid or go back into traditional, the information that we have received that it is highly likely that we will need to transition back a step either into, back into a hybrid or back into a remote. And to make things consistent for student wake up time and also for students reporting to class, we wanted to try to keep those, that timeframe as consistent as we could throughout the course of those three models. But you do make a very good suggestion as far as teenagers requiring additional sleep when compared to, to primary age students.
So wouldn't this be a great time to make that change? Just, just a suggestion for future teenagers. My second question is about, have we considered improving our HVAC systems or adding any standalone filtration to the classrooms, what for when we do go back?
Yes, and Mr. McDade is on the line with us. Mr. McDade, are you able to address the HVAC issue?
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can.
Yes. Okay, all, all of, all of our schools have had upgraded HVAC systems. Elementary schools were upgraded in two thousand thirteen with multi-split units. They have designated fresh air units that bring fresh air in, and they have cassette units in each classroom that heat and cool the rooms. Our high school was upgraded in two thousand eighteen with all new HVAC equipment. And that equipment brings in fresh air. We can mix that, that equipment actually with a hundred percent fresh air to come into the school. So all of our, all of our buildings fortunately have been upgraded, the HVAC units. And I seen on your question about standalone air filtration systems, I did look into them. And the problem with them is they do not, the square footage that they filter is very inadequate for our classrooms. So it's not really a good option for, to put them in our classrooms.
So that's great. Just to follow up, do you have any evidence that the upgrades will filter a COVID virus?
I just had a meeting today with, with a company about putting MERV thirteen filters into our systems to give us some stronger filtration in the building. And right now we use MERV eight filters, so I am looking into replacing the filters if the equipment can, if those type of filters can be placed in our HVAC equipment.
Great. That's very impressive. And just in general, I want to say to everybody on the school board that the plan that I just witnessed is is impressive and I really appreciate all the work you've put into this, taking into consideration the safety of our students and our staff. And so that brings me to my final question, which is what is the plan for sports this fall?
So athletics, what we plan to do is continue to monitor. Governor Wolf originally came out with his recommendation not to for any schools to have any type of athletics until January of 2021. The PIAA then met this past Friday, put out their statement that they were going to delay the beginning of the sports season until for two weeks, which basically starts the fall sports season on August the 24th. And the WPIL also came out with the support of that statement as well. I believe what their plan is to work together to determine what the best course of action is to to move forward. To this point, we have been running conditioning exercises with all of our athletic programs for fall sports and have also had some of our winter sports doing some exercises as well. The health and safety plan that we have for our athletic program is intense. It was shared by Mr. Millsom out to each of our coaching staffs and has been implemented very thoroughly. And given the parameters that have been put in place with the health and safety plan, at this point, we're very comfortable moving forward. But we do look for additional guidance from the PIAA and also from the WPIL and are interested to see the fallout from some of the college-level athletics starting to make decisions to to not offer some of their sports as well. So it is something that we are monitoring very closely, but throughout the process, we have treated it very serious and have been doing our best to keep our children safe as as they move through a variety of types of extracurricular activities.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I have a daughter who is into sports and has been conditioning throughout the summer and the mitigation, I think, is effective. I just think that, you know, given the very proactive stance you've taken on the academic level, that we should consider the athletics a sensitive area and it's a lot easier for parents to say, you can't go if you already said you can't go. So I would be in favor of less sports, even though my daughter is very athletic. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
And we appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Mr. Jones, do we have any other residents or guests that want to speak?
So we do just have a Q and A question. No more hands erased. So I will read this. This is Eric Valcheff at 78 Belvedere Street, Crafton. Hi, his question, I guess, I don't know if he has multiples, but I'll just read the whole thing for you. Oh, he has three. I have three questions. Would you detail how attendance will be counted at the elementary level for asynchronous learners? Would you detail how teachers will be entering grades into the grade book of record in the student information system? And would you please also detail when parents and students will have access to the grade book to track grades and attendance in the student information system?
Okay, I can, I can address those. As far as the detailed for attendance for asynchronous learning at the elementary level, just a little bit more insight on that, if it's an asynchronous student, then what we recognize is they're not able to attend the face-to-face, the live setting during the the regular school day, which is I'm assuming what you're asking about. If we have a student who's fully asynchronous doing their work in the evening, for example, is in daycare and does not have access to online activities and they're doing their work from four o'clock to eight o'clock or nine o'clock into the evening, what we will do is we will monitor how often that child logs on to Google Classroom. So we'll be looking for daily activity in Google Classroom. And then what we will also be looking for is the submission of coursework from the student back into the teacher so the teacher can provide feedback to the student as far as progress. That kind of leads you to your, the next part of your question, which then asked about how teachers will be accessing, I'm not sure if I remember what the question was, Josh, that you read, entering grades into the grade book of record, into the student information system. So teachers will continue to use, we made the switch from e-school into Power School over the summer. Teachers will use Power School to enter their grades, very similar to what they have in the past. So as as far as the difference that the parents will see, parents won't see any difference between the way the grades have been handled in the past and the way they are handled going into into this school year. We will still provide reports at every midway point through each of the four marking periods and then also at the, at the end of each of the marking periods as well. So a total of of eight reporting times throughout the course of the school year. And then I believe your your third question was related to detail when parents and students will have access to the grade book to track grades and attendance in the student information system. That presently is a contractual issue that we will have the same type of access to grades that we've had access to in the past so that we don't have access, parents don't have access to to the live grades through Power School or through e-school. Thank you, Dr. Crider. Mr. Jones, any other questions or anyone lining up?
Uh, we, okay, Eric has responded back. So no daily grades, just the eight reporting times during the year. So why wouldn't this be part of the MOU?
That was not a part of the MOU that was that was agreed upon.
Okay. Well, that is, that is it for questions. And nobody is raising their hand at this time. So oh, actually, I lied. Well, no, never mind. That that looks like it. So I give it back to you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Board members, any other open forum questions from you? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. 12 seconds.
Second.
12. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Did we announce that we're, did we announce that we're gonna go back into executive session?
I did at the beginning, but I think it's worth a reminder. So
All right.
Thank you, Joe.
No, I must have missed it. Aye.
So ayes have it approved, we're adjourned and we will go back into executive session and I I referenced that at the beginning of the meeting. So thank you. Thank you, everyone.